So this is the Kitsap Sun's editorial board and we're talking to the candidates for the at-large position. Bainbridge Island City Council, Peggy Mulhern, excuse me, and Ron Pelletier. Am I saying that correctly?
Yeah, either way, Pelletier or Pelletier.
So what I'd let you do first is take about two minutes, just introduce yourselves to us, where you are, see where you came from, why you're interested in doing this, then we'll kind of launch into some questions and that. Peggy, why don't you go ahead and start?
I'm Peggy Mulhern, I'm, uh, where would, I'm from Bainbridge Island, obviously. I'm running for the at-large seat. I've been living on the island for over twenty-four years, raised my family there. I practice law part-time, I'm a community volunteer. I'm probably one of the more active people in the, previously in our sports leagues. And I have been the longest-standing, probably, board school on the highly advisory, highly capable advisory committee, sort of historic committee that we've been working with the school board. And that's where I've had a lot of policy and procedure and working in a consensus environment with a group from our community. I've had the pleasure of working on a lot of other community things, including city, citizen advisory committees, shoreline, and Washington State ferries. And I enjoy outdoor activities, I really love biking, swimming, sailing, hiking, camping, all the things that we love about the Northwest. Running for council because I've been involved in some community things, I've been involved in some environmental causes. And I think that I can help to bring the island forward through this period of change and growth. We're working on the comp plan now and we're going to be revising the planning code. We've got traffic issues, we've also got some economic issues on the island. Although we're having a lot of growth, we need to make sure we've got a vital downtown and that we're able to sustain businesses that'll support the arts, human services, and keep the island a varied and viable community.
I'm Ron Pelletier, I'm also running for the at-large position. My family moved to Bainbridge Island in nineteen sixty-five. I went to high school there, came over here and went to Olympic College. And then I took up a career as carpenter on the island. I met my wife Polly Longworth on Bainbridge Island, my son Reggie was born on the island. And we built our own house there a few years ago. As you all know, in nineteen ninety Bainbridge Island decided to become a city, to have what we call home rule. And the idea was there that we'd have more local control over development because we were very concerned about the loss of the island's special character. And there was a lot of development that started to happen in the nineteen eighties. That hasn't exactly turned out the way we hoped it would, and there's a couple of reasons. First of all, when you create a new government entity, it tends to take on a life of its own. And to some extent, our city government has forgotten the stewardship principles that we had in our first comprehensive plan, that are still in our comprehensive plan. And the other reason is that the Growth Management Act was passed the same year that we voted to incorporate. And a lot of islanders didn't realize what the Growth Management Act was going to do as far as being a city. So now that we're the city of Bainbridge Island, the state and the county expects us to act like a typical city. Bainbridge Island, though, is distinctly different from any other city in the state of Washington. First of all, we're the only island in Puget Sound that's a city. Located in the middle of the nation's largest saltwater estuary, we'd like to do our part to help clean up the sound. More and more density on the island doesn't help that cause. In fact, more and more density in the Puget Sound basin isn't helpful in terms of cleaning up Puget Sound. The major sources of pollution in the sound are undertreated sewage treatment effluent, contaminated stormwater runoff from roads, parking lots, impervious surfaces, and septic systems. Another, so, and basically, you know, we have a conundrum, this perpetual growth thing that we're all kind of, it's kind of like a runaway train that we're riding, is making it really difficult for us to protect the environment and clean up Puget Sound. Another distinct difference for Bainbridge Island is that we're the only city in Washington State that's completely surrounded by saltwater and solely dependent upon groundwater for our fresh water supply. There's no viable and financially feasible alternative has been identified as an outside source of water for Bainbridge Island. Yet, we don't have on Bainbridge Island, we don't have a groundwater management plant for the sustainable use of our aquifers. That needs to change. We need to recognize that we have finite natural resources on the island, embrace that fact, and insist that our vision of the island be respected so that we can plan for a sustainable future. So, one last thing I'd like to add to that if I have, could, is, the other day, the Pope said something really interesting. A quote, he said, "God is forgiving, people are sometimes forgiving, and nature is never forgiving." End quote. This is really, this is really a global issue, respecting the limits of our environmental resources. The Pope gets it, and more and more people are getting it. We're going to have to pick up the pace of enlightenment, though, when it comes to the environment. And that's really a lot of what my campaign's about.
Let me ask, the first question is kind of along, you both are breaking up development and density and things like that. The city is soliciting potential bids for the Suzuki property. And so this is something that's being talked about, and I don't know if this will happen this fall or potentially when one of you is sitting in that seat. And there's a discussion over what the density should be there. Should it change, should it be more high density, what kind of residential should look like if that property is sold? What do you feel, now that you're both kind of saying, "We are growing, but we need to protect," with that property in particular, how do you feel the city should approach that question a little more?
For me, it's kind of a layered answer. First of all, I don't support selling the property at this time. It's going to be there, it's not going to limit what we can do with it if we keep it. It's just going to be more valuable to the community. And since we're going through our comp plan update, we're kind of looking at development issues and hopefully having a water plan, and just kind of looking at the overall balance between development and natural resources. I don't favor surplusing it, but the council has decided to do that. Now, if they do surplus it, I would like to see it dedicated, if possible, a hundred percent to affordable housing. But I would like it to be, not to maximize the density, but leave a lot of that property in a more natural state so it can remain of value to the local neighbors and to the island. Leave a lot of the trees and cluster some development. I would even favor having, I mean, I don't think we need to get the maximum price out of it if we can get some value in terms of our community values that we want to promote. So, it's kind of a, it's sort of an art of the possible, and there is a community, there is an affordable housing aspect to it, and I know the council's thinking about that. And we're going to be, and that's something that the future council may be discussing if no proposals have been accepted, you know, by the time we...
I'm sorry, I missed it, which piece of parcel was going?
It's called the Suzuki property, it's south, it's northwest from the high school, or just north of the high school, and near Commodore and Woodward, kind of across the...
Is this the one we went up to look at?
It's nearby there.
Yeah.
I've talked to a lot of the neighbors, and I think those Commodore neighbors have been the most vocal people at the council meetings. And I think that the council has done a good job getting the RFP in a, putting it out in a manner that will hopefully bring in some varied and interesting opportunities for the property. The environmental concerns, as Ron says, are real and distinct, and the neighbors are very clear that there's a lot of water issues, and there's a bit of a pond in the property. And the buildings that are right abutting to it are, have some difficulties with a lot of runoff already. So they're, of course, quite concerned. But if you go to the very north side of the property, you can see that it's not really properly forested. There's a lot of kind of spindly growth there, and that's not something that is necessarily what we need to preserve. But we do need to be mindful of the density there. And it's, one of the questions has been, can we make it a very high-density affordable housing? And that's sort of one of the pushes that a lot of people feel, especially the abutters, that the RFP is tending toward. And some of the problems with that, of course, is that, just like any other high-density development, you're going to have more traffic, you're going to have more load on your environment. And I think that the city needs to be quite mindful of that. At the same time, I'm really excited about the possibility of making it an affordable housing. And I would like to see the city come up with a way of putting some money in it so that they can actually do some single-family affordable housing, preserve part of the property for, there's been a movement, request for it, to preserve some of it for some kind of small agriculture, and it might even be related with the schools. So that's a good option. Some other options that have been put out there and kind of passed over, but might be able to be revisited depending on what comes in, if the RFP process, which will be by the end of the, before the end of the year, if it's not, if there's nothing on the table that the council really wants to consider, there's a possibility of swapping the land with some other land. The school district might be able to make use of it, or the park district. And I think one really positive thing that's come out of the whole discussion is that the council separated it from the police facility and the public safety facility. Originally, the, you know, selling or surplusing of the land was directly tied with the funding of that, and that put some more urgency on it, and now that urgency is not there. But like a lot of things, there's some economic decision has to be made for the community good, and hopefully, we can come up with some sensible use of the land.
You both mentioned affordable housing, and I suppose it's because it's being considered here, and I believe there was just a recent one that opened with Ferncliffe Village, recent expansion there. What's your sense of how much more need there is on the island? And what kind of active steps, whether through city council action, comp plan, development? Where's your focus when you talk about that issue? And what do you want, what would you like to see over the next couple of years there?
I'd like to see the islands really step up to taking the financial responsibility for affordable housing. I think there's a lot of...
The city itself putting some money?
Well, the city, through some aspect of public participation, because there's a lot of public talk about the wanting to have more affordable housing or workplace housing or something, but we don't really see a lot of funding for it. We have a Housing Resources Board, we need to go past the NIMBY problem, we need to get past the, "I don't want it in my yard." But we also need to think of putting it somewhere where we can, at the same time, reduce the use of cars. One of the things that developers talk about with their high-density development is they don't like to have to put in parking, it's too expensive. And, you know, at the same time, if you're going to not have parking, you also need to enhance your transportation so people can get around. And we don't, we have some great transportation during the ferry time to and from the ferry, but we don't have it all day, we don't have it connecting over to our other, sort of, from Winslow to Linwood. So I think it'd be smart to put affordable housing in the already dense areas. And I think that we should think about having a type of program, it's more of a workplace, workforce housing would be something I'd love to see on the islands. People can get some sort of funding so that they can then buy the property and buy the house, but the property remains with either the Housing Resources Board of the city. And people would be eligible for that kind of funding depending on their income and their work status.
So I just want to make sure, so you're thinking the city should provide some sort of financial support to accomplish this goal of affordable housing?
I think I'd like to see the city, if we can get our revenues up there, take a lead on it. But failing that, I'd like to see them at least do, we increased partnership with our Housing Resources Board. I think that now as we're coming out of the recession, there are opportunities for the city to be more active in services. If we don't do something as a city, we're going to become just a too-expensive place for a diverse population to live.
So are you suggesting taxes or a bond kind of financing? Where's this money supposed to come from?
I think that the money could come from new ways of the city earning revenues. I think nobody really wants new taxes, that seems to be kind of a buzzkill. Revenue generating activities by a city could include different types of selling advertising, could include optimizing the collection of fees and fines. There could include a public-private partnership for things like a parking facility that we kind of need, either downtown or the ferry. Those are different ways the city could be more active in generating some revenues. But so far, we mostly, taxes are, like most cities, so that's our main source of revenue.
Well, a parking garage is going to cost money, it's not going to generate money. It's probably going to take a long time to pay off a parking garage, which I think is an idea we should talk about. But back to affordable housing, I think the first thing that we need to do on Bainbridge Island is be realistic, not make promises we can't keep, because I think that's what we've been doing. I was just reading through the housing element of our comprehensive plan, and like some of our other elements, it makes Bainbridge sound like a utopia for affordability. And of course, it's not. So, one of the, one of the rubs here comes between the environment and affordability, because a lot of the advocates for affordable housing, they want continued projects, more density, and we only have so much land on Bainbridge. When you talk about affordable housing projects downtown, it's really getting, it's really getting tight downtown for any kind of building. And so I'm not sure where we would put more affordable housing. One of the, one of the realities that we have to, we have to acknowledge here is you can't force developers to build affordable housing. You can give them incentives, and then a small percentage of what they build might be affordable. But it's, it's, a lot of those affordable houses that are built by developers revert back to market-rate houses very quickly. So the Community Land Trust model that the, that HRB uses is a good model. But I think we need to be a little more creative in just thinking we're going to build our way to affordability, because I don't believe that's going to happen.
So what's your creative way?
Well, we might be able to do a little bit of what Peggy's talking about in helping HRB acquire some existing properties that can be converted into Community Land Trust duplexes and multifamily housing. There's some of that going on with people who leave property to the, to HRB. And they have programs for home sharing, and we also have assistance to people who want to stay in their houses through our Human Services funding. It's, it's not an easy problem to solve, otherwise we would have solved it. And I don't know where we would, we would get a significant amount of money from the city, because we have, we already have a lot of other things that are competing for funding, like stormwater management. We've got a fair amount to do in properly mitigating for quality and quantity our stormwater. We should be thinking about upgrading our sewage treatment plants to tertiary treatments so that the effluent going out the sound is a lot cleaner. This is a conversation I really want to have, but what I don't want to do is make promises. I think making promises is a big mistake when it comes to affordable housing. And I like the idea of affordability. I've lived on Bainbridge Island for fifty years. I remember when, when it was a working-class community, when almost everybody who worked there lived there. And I've seen it change over the years, the more we talk about affordability, the less affordable it's getting. So, no promises from me, but the only promise that I'll make is that I will work with affordable housing advocates to find creative ways to actually do something.
One of the things that Peggy mentioned during, when you were talking about affordable housing is transportation and having, having ways for people to get there. Now, Bainbridge is one of the, one of the cities in Kitsap County that does have a car tab fee right now. And there was a story in the paper last week about how the state, the Venice State law is going to allow city councils to increase the amount that they could do without a public vote. I guess I'm curious, how do you think the car, have you been in favor of having that car tab and some of the projects that it's funded, as it's been there? And is that something, if you're a city councilman, are you going to say, "Let's, let's look at raising this, get some of these projects done that we need to do on the island"?
I'd look at, I'm not familiar with that, that issue, but I would, I'd look at it, but I also want to talk to citizens and hear how, how they feel about it. Not everybody on the island is affluent. We have a lot of people who pinch pennies to make their mortgage payments and pay their taxes. And I'm one of those people. I wouldn't mind paying a little bit more on my tabs to help fund the city. But I think that's something that, when the council considers, they need to look at all sides of that issue. And really, not just think about getting more money, but how it's going to impact people. And listen to folks, because citizens are really, they're leery about more taxes and government spending. So, I think let everybody feel invested in whatever decision we make in that.
Just, I should have given you the number, that it's a twenty-dollar tab fee right now, if that's what city councils can apply, that would go up to forty.
Go up to forty?
You could, you could enact a forty-dollar tab fee without having to go for...
And then it'd look like it could even go up to fifty, from looking at your article.
Was it fifty?
Well, eventually, that's what can go up to fifty.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't support it, just, I wouldn't say either way right now. I'd want to hear more from people about it.
I would, I would, you answer that, and then we'll talk about specific, maybe, transportation.
I think that I'd like to see, if the city council or me as a city councilor wanted to go ahead with increasing those tabs, if it were directly tied to a project that they had in mind. I think at current time, they are using the funds wisely on the, and backing to our transportation budget. And we definitely need more work on that. But I also think we might want to consider things about, things like figuring out, I wonder if we should have bicycle licenses? And maybe people could, you know, not be so hostile to bikers if they thought that the bikers were chipping in a few dollars every year to ride their bikes.
Part of your revenue enhancement there.
I would support that.
It would be a possibility.
I'm a biker, I'd like that.
And, you know, I think, and I don't actually, I think that my personal bias is that people who, most of the people who ride bikes, and we have a huge contingent on the ferry with me when I ride over to Seattle to work, and I think all of them probably have cars and are already paying into our transportation fee. But I do know the people who don't have bikes have said to me, you know, "Whoa, we have to do all these enhancements for the bikes, why don't they pay something?" So I think that would be one way that the city might actually be able to. I think there are a lot of things a city can do that could generate some income that wouldn't be huge, but also might just create some goodwill, and it's sort of part of the whole transparent government thing. And, you know, you don't have to make two steps to realize that, yeah, these guys that are riding their bikes are also gals that have cars and they are already paying. But, you know, I think that's one thing we could think about. And I think that if you, the way cities often do a project and raise fees before a specific purpose and maybe have a sunset on it, then, you know, more power to them. If they're really going to go ahead and enhance transportation with that money, let's do it, you know?
Okay, so what would you do to enhance transportation? I'd like to hear from both of you, what are the transportation needs as you see them?
Well, we have a huge need of making it easier for people to get out of their cars. And people, they can't really do it very easily now on the island the way our bus system is set up, because it's really still tied to the ferry. We do have one now, a Link Transit it's called, and it has, does serve this ferry's middle of the day, which is better, and it has certain stops, and I think you can request a stop as well. But again, people aren't going to really want to go waiting, you know, for an hour to get, if they're linking, and then they have to wait to get to the north end or something, because it's only one bus going around. So I'd like to see that improved, I'd like to see more of that. And I'd like to see the city work with Kitsap Transit to maybe think about having a more regular shuttle between Linwood Center and Winslow and Ferry. And, you know, there are some projects in the works for Rolling Bay. Again, that would be something that, if you had a way of getting there, people could go there from the north end and not have to get in their cars every time they want to go somewhere. But it's not something that you can necessarily do on a dial-in basis, which we did in the old days, because people want regular service. And I'd like to see that happen with after-school. I'd like to see some cooperation with the school district and Kitsap Transit to provide after-school activity buses that are at the end, the end of the day. Because now there's only the bus ride after school. There's barely any kids who don't do something in high school or middle school after school. And if they were able to get some transportation, we wouldn't have to have everybody have their own car or every parent go pick them up, or one or two kids who will actually bike. And then we get back again to safer streets, and that's one reason so many kids don't ride their bikes to school, because parents don't think it's safe. And it isn't really safe in some of our corridors. So we need to make sure that we have more pedestrian and bike access to all of our schools. Safer Streets to Schools has some great grant money, and I'd love to see the city go after that. And thinking about complete streets, we have, the Squeaky Wheels advocates have really done a great job in identifying the forty miles, the core forty they call it, the worst parts of Bainbridge to ride around on. And if we could put some more of that transportation money into that, I think people would be happy to pay for that. Nobody wants to be, you know, in the car-bike conflict, whether you're a biker or a driver.
I support the idea, at least talking to the biking community about licenses for bikes. I know there's a certain amount of controversy about that in the biking community. So, but I think we should have a conversation about it. I personally would like the privilege as a bike rider of buying a license for a modest fee every year. We do need more bike lanes on the island. We also need to have a level of service standards for bikes and pedestrians. And that's, that would include a number of strategies, not just bike lanes, but also on certain routes, perhaps lowering speed limits. Currently, our bike lanes are paid for by grants that come through Kitsap County, that are from the federal government, come through Kitsap County. So that's where we're getting our money for bike lanes. We may have some money for the recently approved Transportation Impact Fee, too. I think the bigger issue maybe you are all concerned about, I think, relates to our Kitsap neighbors, is the SR three oh five and Agapass Bridge corridor. This is something I've been asking for through the comp plan workshops, that our council has, council members have promised we're going to have a serious community conversation about that. So far, our city council has seemed more interested in talking to their partners in the Westside Alliance about expanding the highway than they have been in talking to citizens on Bainbridge Island. What I would do as a council member is help to organize serious and ongoing discussions in the community about creating proposals for how to address congestion on Highway three oh five. Because I think it's fair to say that one way or another, something's going to happen on three oh five and with the bridge in the coming years. And it's in the best interest of Bainbridge Island to participate in that discussion and come up with some effective proposals that will, that will respect the character and the interests of Bainbridge Island.
Do you have any idea what those would be?
Well, I think we need to consider ways to keep traffic moving through the island. I don't favor expanding to four lanes, I'm very leery of the three-lane idea. I haven't seen how that, what that would actually look like. Right now, the traffic slows down mainly because of the intersections.
Exactly.
I think we're looking at, in the long run, some overpasses, underpasses, some way. And right now, the, I know the state has done some work in the timing of the light by the casino, and that's helped a lot. And the Kitsap... And the Kitsap Transit with the state is gonna be creating a longer turn lane. For cars turning right to go to Sequamish when they come off the island. That's gonna help a lot because that intersection, that light by the casino is really the choke point. When you come off the island in the afternoon, traffic is backing up, is backing up because of the light at the casino.
Well, I live in Sequamish, I can tell you that's not where it backs up.
Oh, really?
No, it backs up at DeRoe.
Okay, DeRoe, well, yeah, maybe we're gonna need to have something like an underpass, overpass there. I, I think we can do that without having a four-lane highway. A four-lane highway is something that I would be very much against because it would remove a lot of the tree buffers. And it would totally change the character of that corridor. But I think we do need to address the delays that occur at the intersection, also respect the needs of islanders to get across the highway. Going east-west on the island. And so I'm saying we need as a community to come up with some good ideas and we have a lot of creative and capable people on the island to help do that. And then we need to go take with our ideas, a full range of, of possible plans. And go to our neighbors in Sequamish and North Keesap and elsewhere and talk about what, what we can do, you know, that's gonna work for us.
Can you feel the community's kinda been left out of that conversation?
Yes, I do. Yeah, I think they.
Do you share that opinion?
No, and I, and I think that the, the time for the big community conversation will be. Again, when, as soon as we are using the funds that Senator Rolfes has got for the study. And for the improvements to the three oh five corridor, she's got fifteen million in the transportation budget specifically for that. I'd be happy to have traffic planners and other experts bring ideas to the community. But I don't, I don't really think that we have time right now to engage the entire community conversation. We've let it go too far, the whole three oh five corridor is totally unsafe. If we had to evacuate the island, it would be a nightmare. There's just, you know, everybody would have to get their own boat, I think, because, you know, you can't even get off the island. And so we do need to address the intersections. We can, one thing I've talked to some transportation planners about is increasing all of the turn lanes. At all the intersections along three oh five there. And we, a third lane in the middle, it doesn't necessarily need, or on one of the side, right or left side. Does not need to cut into the buffers and the trees that are existing on the sides of the road. And that would give transit, it'd be great to have a high-speed transit lane there. It would be great to have an, a true roundabout and some of the more.
Rather than lights.
Rather than lights would, could really speed up a lot of the exit and egress.
All that Bainbridge is opposed to roundabout. Is that, have you guys heard that?
No.
No, okay, good.
There are, there are some people who have definitely were opposed for our first roundabout there by the library. But I think people have come to see that it works. I mean, they're gonna, that's I guess the reason why I'm frustrated with this idea of let's have a community conversation. Because I think that although there are experts in our community on all kinds of things. We're in need to get this thing moving forward, this. I just think that this three oh five issue, you know, we should get some community experts in there. And I mean, some transportation experts and have the community conversation with them.
Do you think, do you think a four-lane highway is realistic? Is that even worth talking about?
I don't real, I don't really, you know, there's no reason to have a four-lane highway with a two-lane bridge. And the bridge costs are right now something that's just sky-high. So my real thinking on this is that we not only have to work on the three oh five corridor. But we need to do more regional planning, more ferry work from Kingston, maybe even from Sequamish. Maybe have enhanced the Bremerton ferry. I mean, what really a study will show is how much of the traffic is simply just trying to get on, off the island.
Yeah, what's, so talk about ferries, I'd like to hear that.
Well, I'd like to respond a little bit to what Peggy said. I couldn't disagree more with her comments about involving the community in planning. And it's not something, we, we do have plenty of time as a community to talk about this. And I spoke to Senator Rolfes about this, the need for community planning and she agrees a hundred percent. We need to get the community on Bainbridge Island thinking about solutions to three oh five and working together. Because our city government presently isn't talking to the citizen. It sounds like my opponent wouldn't make that a big priority either if she were elected.
That's actually not true.
Well, you just said that you didn't think there should be a lot of community discussion about it. Because it's so urgent.
With some planning experts.
Regarding, regarding the, regarding the example she gave of needing to evacuate the island. Yeah, I've heard that before. What are they gonna do on Orcas Island or Lopez Island or Bashan Island? Do we, do we have to make sure people can get off our islands in case of an emergency? Wanna prepare for those emergencies ahead of time? Where are we gonna go to anyhow? I mean, they're gonna have their own problems in Impulseville and North Keesap. We don't need Bainbridge Islands leaving their island in case of an emergency, so I, I totally don't buy that. But I think we have to have community discussion about this. And it shouldn't just be our, our council members talking to the Westside Alliance and people from off the island. And that's pretty much been what's going on. Now, you were asking about ferries.
You wanna have a ferry question?
Yeah, I wanna, I'd like to know what you guys think about ferry service. How, I mean, you start saying something, I'm, I'd like to hear what you said.
Right now, you know, I don't know if we could have much more, have much more capacity on the, on the Winslow and Seattle run. They tried running three boats and that didn't work.
Okay, well.
So you got two boats, so I've heard discussed maybe having a passenger ferry in Sequamish. And that's something that I'm looking forward to talking to my friends in Sequamish, because I do know people on the tribal council. I haven't talked to them about these issues since I decided to run for council. But I'd be very curious what they would think about having a passenger-only ferry.
What about passenger-only ferry in Bremerton or the Kingston run or whatever?
If that would help, I, yeah, sure. I mean, is that, is that a controversial issue? We had a passenger ferry for a while to Bremerton. I know there was an issue with the, the wake.
Right.
And is that why we don't have it now?
Anyway, that's a longer story. And it is a little outside the ballpark of the.
Well, one of the things.
Other than doing, other than kind of regional cooperation.
One of the things that I was offered the job actually of directing the Kingston ferry. By the port commissioners back when they, put a few years back when they tested out the.
Oh, passenger.
Ferry from Kingston to Seattle. And a very number of reasons that I turned down the job. But some of them were that they already had selected the vessels, which is always the great part of doing any boat project. It's getting the boats, but I didn't feel as though they really had enough ferry routes, I mean, enough runs. And they, they didn't have the affordability to run enough runs during the day to make it something that the commuters would be able to rely on. Because if there were only two runs in the morning, two in the afternoon, if you missed the afternoon run, then what were you going to do? Your car was up there and you were in Seattle or your bus was only meeting those. So I, I was well familiar with that and I really support that. But I think we need to do it in a, on a way that is, we gotta get more, either Washington State Ferry or Kitsap Transit involved as well. And make sure that you have that in place because like anything, it's gonna take a while to get something like that up and running. And you need to really figure out and really know, where are those people coming from that are commuting? Is that such a big load on the Bainbridge ferry? And if it is, will it work to have some of that diverted to Kingston?
Could I, could I, go ahead?
Sure.
Didn't mean to interrupt you. You go ahead.
I just think that having, in a, in an ideal world, you might help the whole three oh five thing. If you had smaller ferries actually coming more frequently to Bainbridge. But we're not gonna get that because obviously we're filling the ones we have and they're already built. And, and it would cost more in fuel probably to run smaller ones. But if you think about it, that's one of the issues, it's just the sheer capacity. And so if we could make sure that we had easier ways. Part of the bottleneck on the ferries is how people get off the ferry, just walking off the ferry. And if you could walk off on one ramp and go right to the bus and have the bus leave before the parking lot emptied out. You could have a whole bunch of people get off the island. And then the people from the island could get to their cars and go off, that's the thing. We do need to work on that whole terminal area. And the ferry advisory committee after my tenure on it did a really good plan. And there is some really creative solutions out there and ideas about that whole area, which is a nightmare even getting your car out of it.
I'd like to give a little, a little credit to Kitsap Transit for trying out the double-decker buses. Or they have one bus, they tried out on the Winslow, on the three oh five corridor to serve.
I didn't even see that, I never saw that.
Well, I have to, I never rode it, but I, I heard about it and it has, it has an increased capacity from forty-four to eighty passengers. And it was on loan, the one that they tried out, and now they're, they have a grant submitted to get a couple of them. And one of them will be, I think at least one will be on that, on that run.
Yes, at Paulsboro to Bainbridge.
Yeah, and the Kitsap Transit has a new partner right facility that they're building in Paulsboro. And they're also working with the tribe to get, have parking at the casino, parking garage, so. Kitsap Transit, from what I can tell, and I don't use Kitsap Transit, cause I do carpenter around the island and drive my truck around. But it looks to me like they're doing a pretty good job. You know, it's, they're pretty proactive and I think that's, that's a great example of, of something that's gonna reduce congestion. Having the double-decker buses.
I have a, I have a question about the, the, the city council on Bainbridge. And what you will bring to enhance that, that group. What are you hearing when you're out campaigning, knocking on doors and such, about the community's perception of their, of their city council? And also of the city manager, city council arrangement that you have?
I'm hearing a lot of people ask me, well, why would you wanna do that? And a couple of people have kind of implied they thought I was a little bit soft in the head for wanting to be on the city council. So there is, I think, an undeserved, a lot of undeserved harsh criticism of our city council. I think they're really good people and they, they bring some real talents and skills to that and they, they care deeply about the community. And there've been some things that have happened with that lawsuit settlement that we had. And some, some discord and uncivil behavior on the council in the past. That I think has soured a lot of islanders on the, I, and I don't know exactly why, but I do go out and talk to people. And I think that's one of the first things that I'd like to help do is restore confidence and trust in the, in our city government and the city council.
I think that, I must be knocking on some different doors. I hear a lot of people who have really been impressed with the current and last terms council ability to implement. What's relatively new to us is the city manager form of government. And I think that there are a lot of people on the island who feel really positive about the fact that we do have now a government. Where the council is in a position to do some innovative things, to make policy decisions and to lead. And to get citizen input and to understand what's going on and to pass that through to the city. And I think that my experience, having worked on a lot of other committees. And working regularly with groups of people to come to solutions and to work on issues that are big. And require a lot of different inputs will be something that can add to that collaborative nature of the council. And that, I think that a lot of the contacts I have in the community from the different organizations and groups that I've been involved with. Gives me kind of a different ear to the ground than some of the current council. Some of them are retired, some of them are different areas and I think that'll be something that will really serve me well.
Let me ask a, kind of a follow-up question on that. Just a moment ago, you had a little bit of a disagreement over getting citizen involvement and input. And this summer, the city dealt with this issue in that branding campaign. Where a lot of people felt like we were left out of this, we didn't get to tell you our opinion, hear our opinion, anything like that. So kind of following up on what you're just saying, you've seen this happen a few different ways.
Yeah.
You've seen the council, you've seen the city do committees, you've seen them do this, you've seen them do that, you're kind of suggesting they need to do a better job of it.
Oh, yeah.
What do you, if you're sitting in the city council, what are you gonna say? Here's a better way to get honest feedback from our citizens and respond to them. How do you think a better format, what does it look like? From your own experience with something or just ideas that you have of, here's what I would do differently?
When I moved here, it was, having come from Vermont. In Vermont, my husband and I owned our own business. We built a hundred and ten-foot schooner, we carried passengers. Were very involved in the community. We were very involved in, you know, a large organization, Vermont Attractions Tourism thing. And we had a lot of community input. And we had, we were having, it's such a high-profile thing to be running something like that in a small downtown waterfront area. That we had to be very involved with the government. And the way Vermont runs, they have a real citizen legislature. They, people from all walks of life involved in the farming, you know, guys who do maple sugaring, all kinds of things. But the way it works really is they're town meetings. And when I lived there, we were doing town meetings about growth and about management. And they were getting their first Growth Management Act. And each community got together annually, but during this process more frequently. And on the island, we have opportunity to do more, we have board meetings and we should have more board meetings. Where the council members are actually sitting down with the community. And right now, I think they generally do it once a year. I think we should do it much more frequently. The whole branding thing, I wrote a letter to the paper about this, I think. And that's the case where obviously in Bainbridge where we're full of artists and artistic people, the city misstepped. The city, it wasn't the council really wasn't involved until it became a snafu. But that was just the city manager and the staff thought that it was a good idea. They wanted to have a new brand. Well, you know, that turned out to be kind of not what the citizens thought. But if we are gonna have a new brand, let's have a, a home brand. We don't have to educate someone on it. And I think that was a really great opportunity and it really highlights what, kind of a misperception. Yes, I think we've gone past the time to brainstorm our citizen readiness. On some ish, on issue of the three oh five, just because I think we need expert opinions. We don't need just a lot of emotion until we have something real to look at, some concrete plans. That's when we, when people.
How do you, how are you gonna, I guess that maybe that's the catch in all of this. How do you judge which ones are good to get all the feedback? Which ones are good to ask?
Well, I think all things are good to ask for and if, if you have enough lead time, you should always. And that's a way that the ci, we have a new commu, community engagement specialist. And they're trying very hard, I think, to push the information out. But it, this day and age, it has to be in a lot of different sources, because we don't just sit down and read one newspaper anymore and that's what used to happen. And we don't get the information out in advance enough and I think that's one reason that it doesn't seem transparent. Is suddenly there's, the council is thinking about an ordinance. And if that information were out earlier and on planning and on when someone has, is requesting a permit. If that information were all out earlier, now they're trying to put it up on the web. But the website's not really easy to find things on if you've ever tried.
Let's give Rob, let's give him another chance this time.
Well, I, I don't think the website's that hard to use. And to come back to the branding exercise, I think the key words that Peggy mentioned here was that they wanted a new branding for the island. The city manager and I don't know who else, but I'm not, I don't think that islanders wanted a new brand. I think it was driven to some extent by Downtown Association and Merchants maybe. And I think if they want a brand downtown, they should brand downtown. But what we're talking about is branding the entire island. And I don't think that islanders were really asked if they wanted that. The city manager or the, or communication specialist Kelly Stickney. I believe she mentioned that it was talked about at, at one of the comp plan workshops. And I was at all the workshops, maybe. And I was at all the workshops, maybe one person mentioned it, maybe two. And so I don't think there was a lot of community support for the branding. And if you are gonna do branding, it's about the island, let's involve the whole island, make it a project for the island because it's about us. We certainly don't need to throw money at a consultant for South, from South Carolina to come in and tell us, to talk to us and then decide where our brands can be.
So what, what's the way you have that conversation? Whether it's branding or whether it's transportation or whatever else? How, how do you, how do you do that effectively?
I, I think that our council members are, and I don't know exactly why this happens. And if I get elected, I suppose I'm gonna find out what the forces are that make this happen. I think there's a disconnect. Uh, I think there's, there's an agenda that the city has. And I, and this is one of the points I like to make is that our city has a life of its own. And I think its values and its vision are not in sync with the community.
When you say the city, it's, you mean the city government? Is that what you're talking about?
I mean, I mean, the whole, the whole culture, you know, includes the, the council and the administration and the staff. There's a culture there that needs to be changed so that it's more in sync with the community vision. It needs to be more of a stewardship culture. And that's what I would try to bring to city government. And this, you know, the thing about community involvement, part of this is on citizens. They need a little tough love. They need to be reminded. You can't just sit back and expect your city government to work just the way you want it and you don't show up at any meetings. And that's one of the things I'm gonna tell people. Don't complain if you don't come and participate. You have a democratic uh responsibility to be part of what goes on on the island. And I know you're busy, you've got all kinds of stuff going on, but you need to be there to see what's going on and to have input and understand the issues that are going on with the city government. A little tough love.
Um, we're getting close to the end, but I did, I wanted to ask one other, kind of another topic. The, the Adalera moved away, those are relatives, a fairly big business, Donald Winslow. You mentioned farming in your opening comments. I think you said something about business development as well. I suppose this ties into the branding in a little way too. But what's, what's your vision for the business community on Bainbridge Island? Is it going in the right direction, focused on kind of the business parks, Winslow? It seems like those are the major areas right now that done, um, done some additions out there. Or is there a different thing? Should the island be looking for, how do you replace Adalera, for example? I think that's one question. Um, it's not a specific city council thing, but as a person who's a leader in the community, what do you see when you say, well, this is what we'd like to do um in terms of business on the island? I was gonna offer you a first, if you'd like.
Well, I, I know, I know my opponent Peggy has some good ideas because she has a really good business background in business. But I think we do need to uh have, perhaps have an annual or even more often uh uh conference of business leaders and community leaders to discuss how to create an economy that's more sustainable. It's not just vibrancy that, that we need, we need sustainability. And the way I look at that is our economy is not just about uh money, goods and services. The way I look at economy is it's, it's composed of three types of capital. Financial capital, social capital and natural capital. And if you want a sustainable economy that's gonna uh sustain us over a long period of time, you really need to respect the limits of our, our natural capital, those finite environmental resources. Getting back to what the Pope said, nature is not forgiving. If we don't respect the limits uh to our aquifers, for example, they aren't gonna adapt us. We have to adapt to those limits. So I'm looking at what, my approach is a long view of the economy. The econ- the economy is not just money, goods and services. So how, how does city?
Well, that, that's a, that's a kind of good segue into what I think the city and the community need to do is to think about how we encourage and incentivize businesses that would be on Bainbridge that will meet the needs of the local population. And will be businesses that can grow in the community by using the resources of people that we have on the island. And um we can then move forward in supporting more businesses on the island, like the arts, like all the local farmers. Things that are meant to be scalable and sizable to the island. We do have a good opportunity in the Adalara space for another kind of a startup business. Um, something that can grow there. We need to be a bit more entrepreneurial. And um I think that the city can actively, you know, through its chamber of commerce, probably not really a council job, but go out and recruit businesses that will be able to um thrive in the kind of community you have where there are a lot of educated people, there are a lot of, of the workforce. And you know, Adalara had people coming from the peninsula and from Seattle. And the reverse commute works for a while. But again, if we can make our um housing more diverse and make our population a bit more diverse, to have some more young people come back and live there, then you'll have more kind of people who wanna do startup businesses. We need to think about um, you know, one of the things when we were working uh to try to limit the development on the uh three oh, high, the three oh five property was.
The Visconcy, Visconcy.
Visconcy was thinking about, one of the things in our comp plan is that development outside of Winslow should complement Winslow. And um, well, that's really not defined. What does complement mean? But to my way of thinking, complement doesn't mean makes a new place where people will drive their cars to and not get to Winslow. And my idea is that, you know, we should have some businesses that are in Winslow that people need to go to. And we have some and we need to keep those. But right now, we have some shuttered up, um, you know, boarded up uh buildings, a couple that are needed to be rented. And so I think that community partnerships, strategic incentives by the government and um, you know, making it easier for businesses to run on the island by making sure there's parking, making sure there's services for them. It's um, you know, we have some exemplary businesses and we need to make sure that they feel supported in the community.
If I could, I'd just like to put a quick plug in for all our home businesses on the island.
Yeah.
And that what we really need is reliable and, and reasonably priced broadband on the island.
Broadband and cell phone.
We agree on that.
Cell phone, yeah. And we can work with Kitsap.
We have a lot of home businesses on the island that do a variety of things. So engineering and photographers and designers and artists.
A lot of artists and you need a lot more broadband.
And we, and we, we shouldn't forget about them. We're talking about the economy. They're not as visible, but they're really important part.
Oh, they're a key, they're a key part of our economy.
Yeah, it sounded like the city council just a week ago or two weeks ago took a step to kind of hopefully try to address some of that wireless capability.
The wireless, yeah, yeah. But um, but we need to do more, we can be a lot more involved with the Kitsap PUDs, uh fiber optic cabling.
Yeah.
And we should.
I live in a place that faces the island on the perimeter side, so I, I'd like a better signal too if I can reach across.
You can get a good signal over Port Orchard. Apparently if you go down south end there in Fort Ward, you can get a great signal like here.
Um, well, we'll just ask one more question and kind of conclude with this. We'll give you both one chance to kind of tell us. Uh, if there's something we didn't get to, get to touch and you wanna just make a statement out of that, feel free to do this. And then just kind of give us a concluding statement. And what I always ask is maybe include in there if you can. What do you think makes you, what, what separates you from your opponent? What would someone look, see in you that they wouldn't see in the other person? Um, not as a shot to the other person, we're all unique. And what do you think your real specialty is? So I think we started with you. Okay, so we'll let you go and then Ronald can.
Uh, you know, one of the, one of the things that really um, when I moved to the island, I was fourteen years old in nineteen sixty-five. One of the really cool things that I became aware of was that because I lived on the island, I was an islander. And there's something about that feeling, this sense, I mean, it, it's not just an island, but if you're from a small town or a place, there's that sense of uh we're all, we all belong to this place. And what I've seen a little bit, it's kind of, it kind of falls along the national politics, is a little bit of divisiveness, divisiveness going on. And one of the things I like to do is talk to people that I shouldn't on paper agree with. Conservatives, Republicans, uh developers. And what I find is that my straightforward and honest approach makes it possible for me to connect with a wide range of people. And I really enjoy that. As I told the uh, the uh panel of realtors that I interviewed in front of a couple of weeks ago, when I can connect as an environmentalist, when I can connect with a conservative or Republican, that makes my day. And I'm finding that it's happening more and more. So for me, I think a lot of it is uh in a small community, especially in any community, appreciating each other and not discounting anyone. Uh, because it's, it's, those things have a way of reverberating and you never know. The person you think you disagree with today is gonna be somebody that you're gonna find common ground with. And so I really enjoy connecting with people and I think I'm good at it. I think I have really good critical thinking skills. I like being a part of groups that, and uh that value independent and diverse views. People that work as a team, but they uh, they offer ideas that maybe go against the grain sometimes, maybe make, make people feel a little bit uncomfortable. I think that's part of making good decisions, being willing to push that, that a little bit. Be the one to speak up and say, yeah, but what about this? And not get caught up in the insular atmosphere, say of city hall. But to remember what's outside there and what people are thinking and how decisions affect them, so.
I think that I would like to stress the fact that I've come to the council with experience in a lot of different uh areas on the island. And having been involved with uh numerous communities within the island. And that one of the ways that we can help as city council members is to be keeping, reaching out to those communities and being reminded of what the different types of people are who are living on the island. And we've got a kind of a um, you know, varied group now. We've got people who are commuting to Seattle, we've got the artists, we've got the home businesses, we've got. And we need to be uh respectful of all the different ways that people have come to the island. And I think that one of the things that sets me apart from my opponent is that actually I came to the island by choice. Having done some studying of where else could I live? And having lived in a bunch of different places that also have some unique qualities and are pretty special. So I come and I understand that in the twenty-five years I've lived here, how special Bainbridge Island is. And I understand why people moved here five years ago or forty-five years ago or have lived here all their lives. And I think that's an important thing to bring to the council. And I can bring to the council a lot of different um work experience and ability to work with agencies, regulations, different stakeholders, thinking it on my feet. If you've ever been a boat captain, you get that idea. You know, you gotta make some decisions out in the public on your feet. That's something that's uh unique. Part of being a city council member is you need to be willing to listen to other council members, take in a lot of information and figure things out in a public setting, in the public meetings uh that they have. And I think I'm ready to take that on. And I'd like to be able to do it for the community. It's done a lot for me.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sorry we lasted a little longer.